Okay, good evening, everyone. I think we're ready to begin. The Planning Mission is hereby called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and is posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. We're live on KCLV Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, Tuesday at 5:00 a.m., and Thursday at 6:00 p.m. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Killing eyes. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chairman Trowbridge?
Present.
And I understand Vice Chairman Trusdale and Commissioner Buckley both are excused.
They've been excused, yes.
Okay, and Commissioner Quinn?
Here.
Commissioner Evans?
Present.
Commissioner Goins?
Present.
Commissioner Ellsworth?
Here.
Thank you.
We do have a quorum. I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process. If appropriate, please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate you adhering to those rules so that we can have a smooth meeting. Thank you. Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the May 28, 2009 Planning Commission meeting?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the minutes.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. There we go. Oops. Well, my mouse is dead. There we go. I got him. Please post. Motion carries. Now let's move on to our housekeeping items. Are there any items that commissioners, staff, applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward for their action?
Mr. Chairman, for items 10, 11, 12, and 13, the applicant has requested these items be withdrawn without prejudice. Item 14, the applicant has requested that this item be obeyed to the July 9 Planning Commission meeting to allow time to work on plan revisions. Item 15, the applicant has requested that this item be withdrawn without prejudice as the requested variance is no longer needed. Items 16 and 17, the applicant has requested that these items be obeyed to the July 9 Planning Commission meeting to allow time to work on plan revisions. And item number 28, the applicant has requested that this item be obeyed to the July 9 Planning Commission meeting, and no reason was given for the request.
Thank you. Does anyone in attendance wish to speak on any of these items? Hearing none. Commissioner Goins, would you care to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve all the abeyance and withdrawal items as read in by staff.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Post. Motion carries. We now can move on to the one-motion-one-vote items. The following items that are to be considered in one motion, one vote, they are considered routine, public and non-public and public hearing items. All public hearings and non-public hearings will be opened at the same time. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. Item number 6 is TMP 34429. Isaiah Crossing, the applicant owner, is Emerald Lake Inc. and Yazuma and Marcel Iziki for a one-lot commercial subdivision on the north side of Lake Mead Boulevard, approximately 170 feet east of Martin Luther King Boulevard. Item number 7, RQR 34239. The applicant is Clear Channel Outdoor. The owner is Shoshone Cattle and Land Development Company. It's a required review for a 40-foot-high, 14-foot-by-48-foot off-premise sign at 3200 Valley View Boulevard. Item number 8 is RQR 34410. The applicant is Preymen Mashi, owner of the Rancho Alan LLC. Required review for two 40-foot-tall, 14-by-48-foot off-premise signs adjacent to the east side of Rancho Drive, south of Coran Lane. Item number 9 is RQR 34411. The applicant is CBS Outdoor. Owner is Michelle Archiardi. Required review for a 40-foot-tall, 12-foot-by-24-foot off-premise sign adjacent to the west side of Rancho Drive, approximately 250 feet south of Alexander Road. Anyone here wishing to speak on any of those items?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Are they keeping those signs nice, homeless not hanging laundry from them, Matt?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion on the one-motion-one-vote items, please?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the one-motion-one-vote items subject to all staff's recommendations and condition.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Motion carries.
Item 6 is final action in the absence of an appeal, and 7, 8, and 9 will be heard at the August 5 City Council meeting.
We now move to item number 18, SMS 34174. The applicant owner is Caroline's Court LLC for a commercial development with waivers of the Town Center sign standards and to allow 2,609 square feet of freestanding signage where 1,506 square feet is permitted, a 100-foot pylon sign where 25 feet is permitted, three monument signs along the El Capitan Way Street frontage where two are permitted, and to allow wall signs to face an existing residential development that is located outside of the limits of the Centennial Hills Town Center where such is not permitted at the northeast quarter of El Capitan Way and Durango Drive. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, this is a request for a master sign plan at a previously approved commercial center located within the Town Center master plan area and includes both freestanding signage and wall signage. The proposed wall signage conforms with the Town Center sign standards. However, as part of this application, the applicant is requesting waivers from the Town Center sign standards for the height of the freestanding pylon sign, the number of monument signs allowed at the site, and for the orientation of wall signage. Pursuant to the Town Center sign standards, the height of the pylon sign is limited to 24 feet from the elevation of the finished road surface where the site abuts the 215 or 95 right-of-way. In this case, the actual sign height allowed would be 53 feet based on the road elevation being higher than the sign location on the subject site. The applicant has submitted a revised elevation depicting the pylon sign at a height of 80 feet, which is 27 feet taller than allowed. The second requested waivers for the number of monument signs allowed along the El Capitan Street frontage. The applicant is proposing three signs where two are permitted based on the lineal feet of street frontage. The third requested waiver is to allow wall signs to face an existing residential development located outside the Town Center master plan area to the north of the subject site where such is not permitted. Staff cannot support the waiver request and is recommending denial of this application as the proposed signage could be reduced in size and quantity to meet the Town Center standards. If approved, staff has an added condition that all wall signage on Building G that faces the existing residential development to the north shall be non-illuminated. Please note that a fourth waiver request for the total area of freestanding signage is no longer necessary as the applicant has revised their signage to meet the requirement. This information is included in the orange sheet updates.
Thank you. I'd like to clear the public hearing open now and ask anyone in attendance wishing to speak on the matter to approach the microphone and give your name for the record, and please sign in. There should be a sign-in sheet there that makes it easier on the clerk to spell your names and such. On behalf of the applicant we have?
Lindsey Hill at 242 Sumpak Avenue, Henderson.
Jacob Kachory, developer.
Okay.
Better lines court.
The original application last month requested a total of four waivers. Since then, we have eliminated the need for one of the waivers, which was the increase in sign square footage. This project was approved under SDR 20496 on July of 2007 for 269,860 square foot of floor area. According to the Town Center code, the project is allowed one square foot of signage for 150, um, I'm sorry, square feet of the total project's floor area. This results in 1,799 square feet, to be exact. We now have 1,775 square feet of signage. This was accomplished by reducing the size of the pylon sign, both in height and width. Having cleared this away, I would like to explain the three remaining waivers. Upon this commission's advice, we held a neighborhood meeting, and approximately 20 neighbors were present, as well as Mr. Doug Rankin of the Planning Department and Sheila Lambert liaison to Councilman Ross. This first waiver is for the additional monument sign on El Capitan. We explained to the neighbors the height...
Excuse me, it's upside down.
Oh, I'm sorry. We explained to the neighbors the height and width of each monument sign and informed them that aside from lows and staples, there was an additional 83,000 square feet of retail and restaurants within the center. The four monument signs allowed by code only provide 24 sign spaces. This equates to one sign space for every 3,500 square feet of floor area, which is very limited and not realistic. On the other hand, with the extra monument sign, there would be a total of 32 spaces, which translate 2,600 square feet of floor area per sign space. The neighbors understood this limitation very well, and having asked them how they felt about having an extra monument sign, there was not one neighbor that showed any opposition. In fact, I will go as far to say that they all liked the details and how the sign designs blended with the buildings and the project as a whole. They understood that we are 80 feet short of the 900 linear feet required for the third monument sign, and they were all in agreement to have the third monument on El Capitan. Is there any questions about this waiver? No? No? Okay. For the second waiver... This second waiver is for the wall signs that face existing residential. This development is surrounded by commercial except on the north and a small amount across El Capitan to the east. The residential to the north has an existing block wall separating the properties. There will be a five-foot area of landscaping, a 10-foot-wide trail, and then another five foot of large landscaping with heavy foliage trees. This heavy landscaping will obstruct the view of the property from this residential area. Building G has two elevations that face residential. Both elevations will have large landscaping and the entire width of El Capitan to block the view of any wall signs on these elevations. Even so, the developer has agreed not to illuminate the signs on Building G facing the residential homes. As for the homes across the street from El Capitan, no neighbor had reservations about having illuminated signs on El Capitan. Upon looking at the attached pictures, you can see that there is only one window of the two homes facing Building G across El Capitan. These are those photos, these photos right here. This is a photo taken from the property, and these are the minimum houses. And you can see only one window. I don't know if you can zoom in. And then over here, you can see there's only one, two, three, four.
Not facing...
Well, across, yeah. Yeah, facing it.
That's to focus up on Shady Pines?
No, Shady Pines is actually over here on the north of the property.
Okay.
That's Shady Pines. Over here is a different development.
Gotcha.
This development has a large drop in grade from the property line to the north. The Lowe's building will sit lower than the houses to the north and decrease the visibility from the homes. No neighbors contested the Lowe's signage at all. If you guys want to see the actual drop in grade compared to where the homes sit, compared to the Lowe's and the rest of the building, if you could zoom in on this right You can see this is the houses. Here will be the trail with the trees, and then we have a significant drop in grade where the Lowe's, and it actually drops even lower when we get to the location of the pylon sign. Okay, this last waiver that I would like to bring to your attention is the height of the pylon sign. Since I was before you last month, we have reduced the height of the pylon sign by 20 feet, 100 feet down to 80 feet. In addition, we have reduced the width of the sign body itself from 36 to 32 feet and the height of the sign body itself from 56 feet to 43 feet. These two pylon signs on the board, these are to scale. This is what we have proposed to you last month, and this is the reduction we are proposing We'd also like to bring up the point that the Centennial Center pylon sign is at 79 feet, is similar in construction as to what we are proposing, three-sided, and it sits flush with the freeway. And it actually has 65 feet in height of the sign body compared to our 43. Most of the neighbors at the meeting understood that a center of this size adjacent to the freeway does indeed need a pylon sign, especially as there are no single-family residents within 1,200 linear feet of the pylon sign. All the neighbors understood that the pylon sign was going to be situated drastically lower than the Durango Pass, and that aside from the extra height allowed by code to reach the same elevation on Durango, the pylon sign has to be higher in order to have visibility for northbound traffic on the I-95 as well as traffic on Durango. Only four neighbors objected to the height of this pylon sign. However, the very next day, two of the neighbors, Mr. and Mrs. Goldstein, who are present today, called and let us know that after the neighborhood meeting, they went and assessed the situation once again and were in agreement with the 80-foot pylon sign. So, in fact, of the 20 neighbors present, only two opposed the proposed 80-foot pylon sign. In general, the neighbors agreed that in order to have a successful center in their neighborhood where it will bring much-needed tax dollars as well as increasing the value of their homes, all tools shall be given, should be given, to the tenants for their success, which in turn would be the success of the center.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak? Please approach the microphone and give your name for the record. Mr. Farlow?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. When Town Center was being hashed out years and years ago, we argued on this sign thing for months and months until we finally came up with an agreement that everybody agreed on. Now, we have applicants that want to change the bar. That is a bad deal because when you reset that bar, you're going to have the people that are already there, that have already built those signs, they're going to come back and want more. But to be a successful commercial center that they want to be, it's in the marketing and business, the way the business management of the particular businesses that are running this, not in the sign itself. In a way, I just don't think that we ought to be resetting the bar. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
My name is Erwin Goldstein. I live at 8760 Shady Pines Drive in Las Vegas. I originally was very much against this sign. I thought it was, at 100 feet, would be way too high. They've compromised, come down to 80 feet. You've come up with a variance that allows them to go up to, what, 57 feet, I believe it is?
53.
53. So, we're talking about a 27-foot variance. We had the neighborhood meeting. I was in attendance. I was against the sign again, but the rest of the people said it was something we should do. So, I'm not, I withdraw my objection, and I'm going to go ahead and support this because I feel it's something that should be done to help support the success of the shopping center.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak? Ma'am?
Hi, my name is Susan O'Hara. I'm at 8709 Shady Pines. I actually live at the third house there. I'm affected a lot by this. I did attend the neighborhood meeting, and this is my take on it as a resident of Las Vegas and living in northwest Las Vegas where there is very little commercial development, very little in the way of restaurants, and I might even say, a new development that was put up on the other side on Farm, not overly successful developments. So, when I look at something like this, I'm not opposed to the sign. At the original meeting, I was not opposed because in my mind, if you want to get, I don't want to live behind a development that is not successful. Now, not everybody knows that we're there. Even when I tell people where I live, at Durango and 95, they're like, wow, you live all the way out there. They don't know what's here. I think just because of the way the grading is where these people are asking to put this sign, it needs to be high enough to go above the Durango overpass, which I don't even know if that was there when these original plans were put in, or this was being hashed out, or people understood how tall that Durango overpass is it goes over 95. I've only lived in Las Vegas for three years, and my point on this was I rely on signage to find out where things are. We drive very fast on 95. When we're looking for something, we rely on signage, and the short amount that they're asking to increase this sign is not a great deal, but I do believe it will help in the marketing of this development. And I want these businesses to be successful because I don't want to live on the other side of a vacant development. And I believe that people who are going to invest in this property, who are going to be the small business owners to put in shops, want signage. They want to draw the business in. So, what they're asking for is yes, just when you look at this, I want to be able to people to see the sign when they come up 95, whatever direction, even if they're coming into Las Vegas from North 95, and they're going, well, that's a good place to stop. That's a viable stop. I'm not going to go on down to Centennial Hills. I'm going to stop there. But if the sign's not big enough and it's buried below the Durango overpass, I'm afraid these people will see some failures in their businesses, and that's not the purpose of this development. We want success for these new vendors, so...
Ma'am, what was your address again?
8709 Shady Pine Drive.
Gotcha. Are you the house with the balcony?
Right here. I live next to the house with the balcony.
Yeah, I'm looking at it. Okay. And that was my concern, whether that person with the balcony...
You know, I was very good friends with the woman who owned that house at the time. She's since sold it for nothing. You know, that balcony, I've sat on that balcony. I've watched the Las Vegas fireworks from that balcony. It is up high enough that it, that sign also, the way that balcony is shaped, if you look at it, it's going straight down El Capitan. The sign, correct me if I'm wrong, you guys, is right over here. That sign is not going to be in this woman's way. And when you're looking at the strip, and she wants to see the lights of the stratosphere, it's all the way over there. She, that one, there is nothing to even look that way, other than maybe some of the mountains. And right now, all you see is the Durango overpass from her balcony. And then the other house does not, on the corner, does not, does have a balcony as well, but it also faces the same. And my big concern was lights. When I came, when I didn't, with my house, the second story, I didn't want the lights shining in, but that doesn't appear to be an issue because they're also so far away from our homes, so...
Thank you.
All right.
Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed and turn over the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion. I'd like to ask the first question, just for clarification. Do we need a condition that addresses the no illumination to face the residential units?
What was the question?
Do we need an additional condition to stipulate that no illumination will, the signings will be facing the residential units?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. There was an added condition that all wall signage on Building G that faces the existing residential development to the north shall be non-illuminated.
Okay, read it in. Okay, read it in. Okay, fine.
May I ask you to make it a little bit more precise and say the one elevation facing? Because theoretically, this side could be interpreted as facing homes. This side. So, we're talking about just the north elevation?
Mr. Chairman, the condition is read in, indicates the signage facing the residential to the north, so I think the condition is fine as written. I don't know what other condition we could do to clarify that. Do you want to say the north elevation of the Building G shall be non-illuminated signage?
That would add the specificity, I think, that the applicant's striving for.
Thank you. The north elevation, and we all know it's that particular elevation, and that's it.
Vice Chair Goins, do you have a question?
Quick question for staff. So, if this is approved, what happens to another shopping center owner that comes in? Can they now come in and say, because they got their sign and we want to increase ours a little bit more, can they come back with another sign review of their property and ask us to amend their sign?
They'd have to, they'd have to do a review of condition on any change in elevations or any kind of change in the signs they currently have. But just because one developer gets something doesn't mean that everyone's entitled to get that same thing. So, you have to look at each building on a case-by-case basis and then make a determination whether this, that's a similar situation as this situation.
So, it's up, so we're not setting a precedent here?
No, because, you know, some shopping centers are closer to the residential, others are further away, so you have to decide on a case-by-case basis what you'd like to do.
Thank you.
If I may, Commissioner, if, for example, my property was on same grade as the freeway as this shopping center, I wouldn't be asking for this. Usually zoning and variances are there. When you set out a general rule for the whole area, there is always going to be exceptions to the rule. When somebody's 30 feet below the adjoining pass, obviously, he's going to be looked at differently than somebody who's on the same grade as the freeway.
Yep, I understand that, but then we still get applications that come through that are just bogged down with waivers. And I understand you make a, it's, the burden's on you to prove that that waiver is justifiable, but when you come in and you've got, you know, five, six, seven waivers on one application, to me, that's a red flag, that maybe you didn't plan it out or look at all the options you have to not have that many waivers. So, that's just my concern. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, please. I just want to make a few comments here. I've watched a project develop here over the last couple of weeks or months, and I appreciate the effort that you've made to satisfy the concerns of the neighbors, to protect their views, their interests, their property values. I respect that, and I compliment you on it. I think you have made some significant changes. I think you've made changes that make it acceptable to me, and just as a matter of practice, I like that. I like to see that happen. I don't like them when someone walks in and says, this is what we're going to do, and you're stuck with it, or vote no on it. No, you worked with this, you worked with staff, you worked with homeowners, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
And I thank you for your opinion, for your suggestion to meet with the homeowners last month.
Mr. Quinn?
Yeah, I just want to briefly say that I was very not sold on this project when it first came to, but when you have neighbors that come back to bear witness to what you're doing, it's the fruit of all your labor, and I just want to compliment you as well as working with them, and you will see my support as well tonight, and I wish everybody could do that. Thank you.
Okay. Now, for the discussion, I think we're ready for a motion. And Mr. Quinn?
If I may, one other potential additional condition, and please confirm this, that we would want to add that there's no waiver granted for the signage square footage and that the waiver for the pylon sign is for 53 feet where 24 feet is allowed? Correct?
No.
No? For what, what's the height, then? What's the height, then?
It would be eighty feet where fifty-three feet is permitted.
Eighty where fifty-three. Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a... I'd like to make the motion to approve item number eighteen, subject to all of staff's recommendations, as articulated here by...
In the two additional conditions?
Yes, in the two additional conditions. Correct.
Thank you. Motion's been made. Please cast your vote. Post. Motion carries?
And that is final action, in the absence of an appeal within ten days to the office of the city clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We now go to item number nineteen, which is variance thirty-four four sixty-five. The applicant is Lorraine Wadde Family Trust to allow an existing five-foot-tall solid wall within the front yard setback, where the top three vertical feet must be open at twenty-nine oh nine Coastline Court. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, this variance request is for an existing wall in the front yard setback area of a single-family residence. The wall meets the maximum height allowed, but is not open to allow visibility as required by Title Nineteen. Although the wall is located within the front yard setback area, it is not a perimeter wall and is setback approximately ten feet from the property line. This setback will allow for visibility of the sidewalk and the street for vehicles entering and leaving the subject site. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of this request.
Thank you. I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wishing to speak on this matter, please approach the microphone and give your name and record, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is John Wald. I reside at twenty-nine oh nine Coastline Court. I am the homeowner and the applicant for this variance. I'd just like to thank the planning and development staff for working with us on this application. And I'm pleased with their recommendation for approval. I'm here this evening to answer any specific questions you may have. Thank you.
And you'll accept the single condition that is on this recommendation? Yes?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Any... The public hearing is open. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak? Please approach the microphone.
Do we have a picture of the property?
Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak? Seeing none, we declare the public hearing closed and turn the matter over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
I'd like to make a motion. Don't be lost, I have to say.
I have a quick question, Commissioner. This is an existing wall?
It was during construction. I got a... I got approval from the... My local homeowner association for everything that you see here. When I got my building permit, it was for the building only. And when I got my wall permits, there's several walls around the property. I instructed my builder to build it five feet tall. The plans were permitted that says, within the setback, it's only allowed to be two feet with three feet of open.
So we still kept building?
When the inspector notified us that, we talked to planning, we talked to the building department, got the supervisor out there, and said, you know, we're a month away from opening here. We wrote a letter indicating that if it wasn't approved, because it's like a four-month process through planning here, that we would make modifications to it. They allowed it, based on the fact that all the neighbors around there are, you know, they have the same condition, but they're going landscaping up six feet. There's people that have a two-foot wall, then step it back. There's a lot of things with Nevada Power and Southwest Gas, as you see here in the neighbor's house, that they're requiring now, that there's no way you can screen some of that. So when I went to my original homeowner association, the reason the wall's there because of Nevada Power equipment, Southwest Gas equipment, there's a lot of stuff, I think, that wasn't a... Is now new to the codes that the old codes didn't allow. Here's my neighbors right next door, and they have the five-foot pilasters, the three-foot opening, but they just grew their vegetation up five foot, and they're four foot off the street. I'm right next door, and I'm setback twenty feet, and right to the right of that picture.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one quick question. We could... Can... Maybe we go back to the property. There were a number of houses shown on the screen, but they're not yours, I think. They're... I think it shows examples of...
No, this is my house right here.
Okay, thank you. And are you...
And there's about eighty foot of frontage there. This enclosure takes up less than half of that.
I'm perplexed as to where the wall is.
Where the arrows pointed there? Behind the landscaping there?
So the picture that I'm looking at, it actually doesn't show the wall, right?
Yeah, it does.
Oh, okay.
I've got a clearer picture.
It's an attractive design, I just...
I'll show you a... Okay. Want to put this here? That was bad. Try this one. Here. You see the wall in front here?
Right.
Setback with the trees in front, and even the driveway, we did the pavers with grass.
Can you point on this to where the wall is?
It's right here.
Well, behind the three palms.
Behind the three palms.
Okay. Oh, okay. It looks good to me, and it's setback. I think part of the purpose, if I'm not mistaken, of the code is to ensure that it doesn't have a canyon strange effect in the neighborhood. And I note in the maps that you're kind of in a circuitous, sort of a... Not a cul-de-sac, but sort of a curved street there, so...
It's a...
I like it, and I don't see where it's intrusive. That's why I questioned where it was, because I couldn't even see. Thank you very much.
Do you have a vicious chihuahua behind that wall?
No.
Commissioner Quinn, are you ready to go?
Yeah, I wanted to make the motion for approval. I think this is a great project, and I wanted to make approval with one... There was one additional... No, just with staff's recommendation of VAR three four four six five.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Motion carries?
And this matter goes forward to City Council on August fifth.
Thank you.
We now move to item number twenty, which is variance thirty-four four sixty-seven. It's a variance, public hearing is the applicant is College of Southern Nevada. The owner is the University Board of Regents to allow an eight-foot retaining wall, where four feet is the maximum height allowed, on the northeast corner of Oaky Boulevard and Torrey Pines Drive. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing a retaining wall in order to provide drainage, so that the drainage on the property drains towards Torrey Pines. Staff finds that the topography of the site is unusual, and a hardship is definitely in this instance, and is recommending approval of this variance. Please note, we did receive additional comments after posting.
Thank you. I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wishing to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record?
Robert Cunningham, sixty thirty South Jones Boulevard with Tanny Engineering. What we're proposing to do here is build up to an eight-foot-high retaining wall in this segment of wall here between Opportunity Village's Magical Forest and the College of Southern Nevada's property here. Right now, this property sits anywhere from eight to nine feet below the elevation of Torrey Pines. And what we're doing here is trying to prepare this for a more level site for future building. With that, I'd be happy answering questions you have. One thing we do have is a letter from Opportunity Village in support of this, and it should be in your backup documentation. They really look forward to this as added security for their Magical Forest, as they've had issues with security in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on this matter, please approach the microphone?
Hi, my name is Sherri Payne. I'm with the Community College of Southern Nevada. And I just wanted to say, we have spoken with Opportunity Village. They're much in favor of this. They've been a very good neighbor for us for many years, and obviously, we don't want to disrupt them. They're all in favor of this. And this retaining wall will also help us develop the new fire station that we're going on, which is the next item on the agenda.
Thank you. Public hearing's open. Anyone else wish to...
Thank you. Sherri Edelman, Deputy Director of Public Works and City Engineer for the City of Las Vegas. Again, this is a project that's being done in conjunction with the City of Las Vegas and with the College of Southern Nevada, and so we would respectfully request your approval today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak? Seeing none, we declare the public hearing closed and turn the matter over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
If no one wishes... I don't want to jump ahead again.
Go for it.
I just wanted to make a motion for approval of that item, and start it off with a good thing. So approval for variance three four five... Four, six, seven, with all staff's recommendations, and I thank Public Works for being here today. It makes it easier.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Post. Motion carries?
That's final action, in the absence of an appeal.
We go to item number twenty-one, which is a site development review, thirty-four four fifty-nine. The applicant is College of Southern Nevada. The owner is the University Board of Regents. It's for a proposed fifteen thousand-square-foot fire station and instructional center at the northeast corner of Oaky Boulevard and Torrey Pines Drive. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, staff finds the fire station instructional center to be harmonious and compatible use with the surrounding land uses, as well as other uses within the campus, and is recommending approval. Staff does note that currently, as designed, the proposed parking lot on the subject site, limits the... Of the constructions don't meet the requirements for parking. Staff does note that there is a planned two-hundred-space parking lot to the north, which is currently under review by the State Public Works Board. As such, staff has added a condition of approval that's already part of the backup, which indicates that no barriers to that parking lot shall be constructed in order to allow pedestrian access to the instructional area. Staff is recommending approval. Please note, we have received additional comments after posting.
Thank you. Those comments were in support of the project. I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wishing to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record and sign in, please.
Sylvia Kim, one oh one five zero Covington Cross Drive, project manager for JMA, the architect on the project. The... I would also like to ask, and just note for the record, that there was a revision to the staff recommendation that the drainage study is submitted, but not necessarily approved.
If I may, Public Works, Bart Anderson. On item number twenty-one, condition number sixteen should be revised to read as follows: A drainage plan and technical drainage study must be submitted to the Department of Public Works. And that concludes the condition change.
Just submitted, it doesn't have to be approved or accepted?
Because this is a state facility, technically, they do not need our approval. But we would like, as a courtesy that they... Well, we would like to require them to give us a copy of whatever drainage they do, so that we have it for our records.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on this matter?
Hi, Sherri Payne, again, from the College of Southern Nevada. This project is... We're doing in conjunction with the city, so that we can put a fire station on our campus. And we... The college believes that it's a wonderful project and a wonderful opportunity to work with the city. Just a few comments in terms of the drainage study, that is not a problem. We would be more than happy to share that with Public Works. And a comment on the parking, we actually received approval from the State Public Works Board this last week, and we have actually received funding from our Board of Regents within the last week as well. So we are ready to go on the parking, which will be just north of this site, which should solve any concerns that you have for additional parking. Thank you.
Hi, Sherri Edelman, again, Deputy Director of Public Works and City Engineer for the City of Las Vegas. Again, this is a great partnership between College of Southern Nevada and the City of Las Vegas, to have a fire station in conjunction with an instructional center, and we very much support this project and ask for your approval today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sam Tolman, forty-four fifty-five East Paddock... That's my old address, excuse me. Eighty-one forty-one Orchard Glen. I'm the Architectural Project Manager for the City of Las Vegas, and we concur with all staff recommendations, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on the matter? Seeing none, we declare the public hearing closed and turn over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
The training center, is this a full-blown fire training center?
It's a four... It's a four-bay fire station. It's actual operating...
Well, it's a station?
Operational fire station, that's correct.
Got you. Thank you.
And to continue, that is the training for Las Vegas firefighters, or is it for students at the... At the college?
Actually, if I might address that...
I'm understanding that it can be both.
We've actually, in addition to the four-bay fire station, we are going to have some instructional space. We've been able to get three-thirty-seat general-purpose classrooms in there. And it will be open to essentially any program within the college. But one of the nice things about it is if the firefighters have a need for instructional space, or need training space, or something like that, with the operating agreement, we're going to work with them, so that they'll have access to the space as well.
But the site would be available to students at the college who are trying to get like their AS degree in fire science, to make them a more attractive candidate to become firefighters?
Well, at this point, the classrooms are general-purpose, but that does not mean that our fire science program cannot be in those. One of the things that we've done in addition is to put in an instructional lobby or student study area, which you'll be able to essentially view the fire station and the operations of the fire bay, so that people can see how it works. We're putting informational displays in the lobby, so students can learn about the history of the fire station and things like this. In terms of the classrooms themselves, we are still working through what specific programs will go there.
But they would be general-purpose classrooms?
They'll be general-purpose, yes.
Any other points or comments? If not, I think we're ready for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion of approval for SDR three four four five nine with all staff's recommendations. Please.
Motion's been made. Please cast your vote. Post. Motion carries?
That's final action, in the absence of appeal.
We now go to item number twenty-two, which is site development review, thirty-four four sixty-eight. The applicant, again, is the College of Southern Nevada. The owner is the University Board of Regents. It's for a proposed eighteen thousand-square-foot addition to an existing building at the northeast corner of Oaky Boulevard and Torrey Pines Drive. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the addition is internal to the site and meets all of the conditions of approval as needed. Please note that the use is compatible and harmonious with the campus college there, and staff is recommending approval. Please note, we have received additional comments after posting.
Thank you. Those comments are in favor. So we'd like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wishing to speak, please approach the microphone, give your name, and write your name down, and let's hear what you have to say.
Good evening, Commissioners. Ray Finkel, project manager for SH Architecture, the architect for the project, seventy-three seventy-three Peak Drive. This project, as the staff has said, is harmonious with the project. What we're doing is adding about eighteen thousand square feet to an existing eighty-five thousand-square-foot four-story building. We're adding it on two stories. All the architecture will be harmonious with the existing, to seem like it was always there.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Ms. Payne, I'm assuming you're in support of this?
Yes, I am very much in support of this. Yeah, this is actually... We were able to get a wonderful donation from the Engelstadt family to build this addition. It's going to help our cardio-respiratory program in our Health Sciences Department. It's a wonderful addition, and as we've been working with the architect, it's been very important that this building looks congruous with the rest of the campus and blends right in.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on this matter?
Chairman, if I may, Public Works, Bart Anderson. I have a similar condition change on this one as well.
I have a similar condition change on this one as well. It's condition number 14, and it should be revised to read as follows. A drainage plan and technical drainage study must be submitted to the Department of Public Works, and that is for similar reasons to the one before.
Thank you. No other people in attendance wish to speak on the matter, so I'll declare the public hearing closed and turn over the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion. Ms. Quinn, wish to Quinn?
Mr. Anderson, I'd like to make a recommendation for approval of SDR 34468, and I'm excited about this project for the area. Thank you.
Motion's been made.
With the condition change as noted, please, Mr. Anderson.
Motion's been made. Please cast your vote. Post. Motion carries.
And again, final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you for that.
We now move to item number 23, which is variance 34515. The applicant owner is the City of Las Vegas. It's to allow a proposed sign height of 37 feet, where 12 feet is the maximum required, allowed, at the northeast corner of the Las Vegas Boulevard and McWilliams Avenue. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, this request is for proposed signage associated with the Neon Museum and Boneyard Park project. The sign will consist of an open lattice framework with historical lettering and a star illuminated by LEDs. It will meet all requirements for signage within the Las Vegas Boulevard scenic byway overlay district. Staff is recommending approval of the request, as the signage will serve the public by enhancing the scenic byway in the area and provide added visibility for civic amenity.
Thank you. I'd like to clear the public hearing open now. Anyone in attendance wish to speak? Please approach the microphone and give your name for the record and sign in, please. No one wishes to speak?
Hi, Bill Marion, 3455 Cliff Shatters Parkway. I am a board member and spokesman for the Neon Museum. The Neon Museum obviously is directly across the street where the La Concha Visitor Center will be, and then we have the Boneyard that is directly east of this site. We are in full approval of the recommend, of this proposal, and we would like to see the sign created. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms.?
Thank you, Chairman and Planning Commissioners. Gina Venglass, 400 Stewart Avenue. I'm the project manager for this in our Public Works Department here at the city. I appreciate staff's recommendation of approval and concur with staff's conditions, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have about the sign or our project. Thank you.
Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed and turn the matter over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Mr. Chairman, before we deliberate or vote or whatever, I wanted to disclose that I was at one point, the mayor's appointment to the, to the Neon Museum Board that Mr. Marion sits on. As, as Bill Marion indicated, it's a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization, but it has a lot of support from the city. And I am no longer on that board, but still a great advocate of their mission. And I've always believed that the Neon Museum represents probably one of the best opportunities for commerce and tourism in the downtown development, and it also preserves our history. In terms of this particular park, which is adjacent in a neon-themed park, if I'm not mistaken, it's funded through SNPL monies. I note that in the, in the design of the sign, there's animation, and if I'm not mistaken, Gina, you can maybe clarify it. I think it's got some chasing elements. From what I'm told, actual neon on this would have been pretty prohibitive since they're using public monies. They were very conservative and judicious in the way they used the money. I sat in on some of the original meetings way back when, when they were designing the, the park, and I can't tell you how, how pleased I am with all of the resources and input and talent that went into this, and I think this is a, a great addition, and I, I can't speak highly enough about it, so. If there's no comments.
Gina, how far does that sign sit back from the, from the sidewalk? You got a landscape buffer, a fence in the sign?
Right. I think it's about 20, 20 feet plus behind where the sidewalk is.
Okay. And, and the reason I ask that, because I know there's an applicant to the south of that that's probably going to come in and want to put some signage on an apartment complex. And my question to staff is, to me, this looks like an upgraded sign, although it doesn't have neon on it, but is this going to be the standard of the type of sign up and down that scenic byway as opposed to just your regular sign that an applicant may, may present?
The requirements of the scenic byway are that it ha, it contains neon, moving elements, and a few other features. In this case, this sign is made of LEDs that do move, so it does meet those, that criteria. Any other sign would have to conform to that on the scenic byway or seek a variance from that.
Thank you.
I think, if I can just kind of respond as well, the, as Mr. Rankin said, the scenic byways, as I understand it, is to, to honor the signage of our history and to display it along the median in Las Vegas Boulevard. Unlike most everywhere else in the city, we want flash. We want movement. We want the bar greater. And so I, you know, those of us who've lived here a long time remember cruising Fremont Street. Most everyone who stayed in the carpet joints on the strip, where there was no pedestrian activity, made their way to Fremont Street. They made the loop. They did the Chinese fire drills. Everybody always gawked at, you know, the, the, the moniker was Chi, I wonder what the electric bill is here. And, and it was Fremont Street in the downtown area was a must-see for people staying on the south end of the strip. I think this represents, and Margot and the planning department's efforts at finding funding for this, this represents a great opportunity for people to be conveyed north to the city. And so the, the more, the merrier, the flashier, the better. And in terms of artistic integrity, I mean, I, I think there's a lot of opportunity there, so. I, I congratulate everybody on this.
I know the public hearing is over, but could I make one more comment based on that? Thank you. Bill Marion again, representing the Neon Museum. As part of the scenic byways project, the Neon Museum is going to be putting 12 more signs along the median on Las Vegas Boulevard headed south towards Sahara. And one of the first ones is, which will be right on, right across on that site, will be the Old Silver Slipper. And so even though it is not technically neon, because it's illuminated by incandescent bulbs, you know, it's, it's a magnificent representation of our history, and it will also be rotating. So these two signs together are going to be working in concert together. I might also just add, we're very proud, because just aired last night on the Travel Channel, and I think which will air all of this month, is a show called Extreme Vegas, which spent about six minutes on the Neon Museum and the Boneyard. Thank you.
Excellent. I appreciate you taking the advantage of the opportunity to plug it. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak? If matters, seeing none, we declare the public hearing closed, and I think we're ready for a, a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm pleased to make a motion following the recommendation of the staff for a, for item number 20, 23, variance 34515. Thank you.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Motion carries.
It's final action in the absence of appeal. Thank you.
We now move to item number 24, RQR 34323. The applicant owner is Marshall Family Limited Partnership for a 40-foot-high, 14-foot-by-48-foot off-premise sign at 2330 Industrial Road. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, this is a required review of an off-premise sign that has not been adequately maintained, as is evidenced by the large quantity of bird droppings on and around the sign. Therefore, staff is recommending denial of this review.
Thank you. Now I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wish to speak on the matter? Please present or approach the microphone and give your name for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, Tom Amick, 3800 Howard Hughes Parkway. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Todd Marshall, this evening. Actually, we, we completely understand staff's assessment of the sign and acknowledge that the maintenance is, is in need of being kept up, or, or, excuse me, improved. So unfortunately, we were not able to accomplish that by this evening. We're prepared to proceed in a couple different ways, depending on, on how you guys would like. We anticipate having this done within the next 10 days to two weeks, which would be done before the city council. At that time, we could present before-and-after pictures that shows the maintenance was, was done and the pole repainted, et cetera. Or if you guys aren't comfortable with proceeding until you see it cleaned up and improved, we're, we're prepared to continue it to allow us time to get out there and, and clean it up and then bring it back before you. So we're, we're prepared to, to, to proceed in either direction, so.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance like to speak on this matter? Mr. Farlow, what's your thoughts on this?
On, on these signs are not kept up. Do they have a fine on those? Are they fined?
If I may, Chairman.
Please, if you would.
Not unless they go through the citation procedure. At this point in time, they have not been cited.
You know, if a homeowner is, is cited, the first day it's $500, and it's $1,000 a day after that. I think that these sign companies ought to be fined $1,000 a day, and they can dedicate it to the neon Boneyard. And if not that, you know, I mean, there has to be some way. There has to be some way. These guys are making a fortune on these. I've read this one guy that lives down in Texas, somebody. His net profits are the highest in the United States. I mean, there's, and, and we have to sit here looking at the crap. Really, I mean, we.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Be the, ask the first que, turn the matter over to the planning commissioners for discussion. Let me ask the first question. This sign has been up since at least November of '03, or was that before that?
No, I think that was just the last review period.
Last review, so it's been up for some time.
It's been there for a question.
Since '94, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Mr. Amick, you gave us a few options, and I'm, I'm not sure how to proceed with this. I would say that as signs go, I think this is the appropriate location. And it's not that, that I have any objection to the sign. I think everybody's universal argument and concern is, is the maintenance. And I guess it has to do with the pigeon guano, or whatever you call it. I note that you've made a representation that it'll be cleaned up, and I somewhat agree with Mr. Farlow, but I guess we don't have that authority. If this were approved at the planning commission contingent on it being entirely cleaned up prior to going to the city council, could that be achieved, or?
Yes.
I mean, we could bring it back again, but, and, and my other concern, and I know you're just the messenger, how can we ensure that in the next few years, if this indeed were approved, that it's maintained throughout, not just at the time of the reapplication? Because Mr. Farlow is correct, there's a lot of money to be made in these things. So how can we proceed?
That's a fair question. I actually asked the same question, because he had similar conditions on his 2003 approval. I think one of the biggest issues there is the, the pigeon issue. That sign is not equipped with the bird deterrent devices. One of the conditions on this staff report requires them to install those within 30 days of council approval, which he, he would have to do. I think if he, once that's accomplished, I think a lot of those issues would go away. The sign definitely needs to be painted. The structure definitely needs to be repainted, which we will do. I think if we, if we can handle the bird issue, I think that, that it would be a much easier maintenance, ongoing maintenance. The, the, the ongoing upkeep would be a lot simpler from that point. So as I stated, we, we, if, if you guys would like us to clean it up and bring it back before you, we're happy to do that. If, if, if you're okay with us cleaning it before council and providing proof that we did, we, we would do that as well.
Well, I'd sort of like to hear from my colleagues up here. I mean, I think you're honorable, and I'm certain if it were to be approved, it would have to be done prior to the.
Sure.
The city council. But as I said, it, it's not the location, it's simply the maintenance.
Yes, I, I understand.
If, if I may, I, I think that, one, I'd like to, what is the minimum length of time that we could approve this for from attorney? Is there?
The minimum, it would be three years would be minimum.
Three years.
Correct.
We have had other applicants under, for off-premise signs that had come forward and had shown evidence of a, of a maintenance contract with someone that would, on a regular basis, paint graffiti, as well as address the, the litter and, and bird droppings that accumulate. And I found that to be a very attractive offer that was made on behalf of the, the applicant. You know, the, the, the sign has been there since '94, so the bird issue is nothing new. It was something that was stressed in, in '03 when the, the approval was received then, and now we're coming back with a, you know, undisputed evidence that the, the maintenance requirements have been remiss, if not totally ignored. It looks like you've got, since '93 was the last time, or '03 was the last time it was cleaned up. And I, again, acknowledge that you're just the messenger, but.
That's a, that's a fair point.
Chairman, if I, if I could just say something, if you want to ensure that this sign's going to come back clean, I suggest you hold it in advance for two weeks or a month, have the applicant clean it up, paint it, put up the bird deterrent devices, have it come back before you. That way, he can show you the before-and-after pictures, and you can see that he's, you know, he's done what he said he's going to do.
That's in Reese's area. I think that's a, a meaningful suggestion. Would I make a motion?
Because if he tried to do that between now and city council, how would we get to see it again?
You wouldn't. I mean, we would have to provide proof to the council, so that, that's why I offered that.
Well, I want to see the before and after.
Okay.
And, and I agree with Commissioner Goins. I don't like it. I, I agree with Mr. Farlow on this. This is amazing that candidate, that, and I realize you're the messenger, but you're that guy we're pointing to.
I understand.
And I, it's amazing to me, you have the audacity to come in here with this kind of a mess, with this years of history, don't care one iota about the, the, the view, or how, how the maintenance is going to be on it, and then ask for more time. I mean, I vote no. I say absolutely not. If you want my vote, you better do, as is suggested here, which is clean it up, make it look right, show us you're serious about it, and that you're going to commit, uh, keep that commitment, then possibly we can look at it and say, all right, let's renew and move on. But as of now, I don't see any reason to renew it.
No, I, I under, I understand that totally, Commissioner. Actually, the, the maintenance contract is a, is a, is a very good suggestion. If we continue it 30 days, I would.
Chairman, I'm, I'm hearing that that's the consensus, so if there's an agreement, I would move to obey this matter for July 23rd Planning Commission, and hopefully we can be better down that road.
Thank you. Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. The maintenance contract is a negligible expense, by the way.
I understand. Thank you.
We now move to item number 25, which is site development review 34450. The applicant owner is 521 South Third LLC. It's for a 30-foot-high, 34-foot-high, 5,705-square-foot office building with three parking spaces at 512 South Third Street. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant has revised their original approval to, and reduced the size of the building approximately 50% in reduction. In addition to that, the applicant has revised their site plan so that there was a reduction in parking from 11 spaces down to three. Staff finds that, even though that this is located within the downtown Centennial Plan, that the site itself is not able to support the development with only three parking spaces, one of which is a handicap space. As such, staff is recommending denial of this project. Please note, we have received additional comments after posting.
What is the square footage down to now?
Uh, the square footage is down to 5,705 feet. It was originally approved.
Okay, that's, that's fine. I just thought you'd reduce it from the 5,700. Okay. I'd like to declare the public hearing open, and anyone wish to speak on the matter? Please approach the microphone and give your name for the record and state your case.
Sheldon Cohen, 9017 South Pecos, 89052, representing the applicant on this project. The, the project is, from the outside or the street side, the look is the same as what was approved previous. It's going to have a very nice legal look to it, and that's what the area warrants. The client really didn't want to undertake any more financial burden than he had to, so this project has been reduced down to how the staff recommended or explained. There was a, even a third-floor observatory on the roof that has been removed. And the client, existing, has a office on Fourth Street, just exactly one block over from this, and he is very well aware of parking requirements and parking limitations, and sees that he will have no problem taking care of his employees with existing parking on the street, and would like to proceed with this as you see it.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on this matter?
Thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. That parking on the street, that's not going to fly.
Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on the matter? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and turn the matter over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion. If I look at the plans correctly, it's, it's four offices and four workstations, and I assume there'll be clients there?
I'm, I'm sure they hope so, yeah.
Okay, and there's three parking spaces for that group?
Right.
Now, are these?
Two attorneys, currently just two attorneys, with each of them having one assistant.
Are they going to commit to ride a bicycle to work, or what's the?
I am sure we could get them to commit to anything. You bet, if you'd like to.
Pinocchio, I see it growing.
Mr. Chairman.
Maybe a pause.
Is there not some way, you've reduced the footprint of the building, but you've also reduced the parking down to three? Is there any way that you can get additional parking in there? Because I think you have, is it one handicap space and then two? Because clearly, there's going to be, at any given time, I would assume, six or more staff people, and if they have. and if they have any clients, there would be a few there, so... And, and I, I tell you, theoretically, and I know you're, you've got that automatic exemption from the, the parking thing, I'm a, not a big proponent of providing excessive parking downtown. And I would like to hope that someday there'll be parking garages and more pedestrian activity and mass transit and all that sort of thing. But given what we have today, I'm, I'm thinking that three is just not gonna cut it. But I do think that one day, when we have a dense downtown, having a parking space for everybody is a little unrealistic. That's the way...
Uh, the previous, the previous design was, um, the first floor had mostly parking on it. And because of financial limitations and cost of doing that, uh, we moved the building more to the first level with parking behind the building. Uh, anytime you put a parking structure underneath a livable or occupiable building, it, the, the cost goes, jumps up considerably. And that's why it turned out the way it did. And the client also wanted to reduce a substantial amount of square footage, so he could afford the building in today's market.
So, you want three parking spaces, and if you weren't exempt, maybe the staff can answer this, how many parking spaces would be required?
I think five.
Five?
Five or six, yeah.
More than three, I guess.
More than three, less than twenty.
Well, let me again see what my wise colleagues have to say, both of them.
And the rest of the city.
Leave it up to guess.
If I'm not mistaken, it's twenty spaces, is what the staff report says.
That would be correct.
Mr. Chairman?
Please, question.
Um, I have a concern about the parking, being that there's one disabled spot and only two regular spots. Um, there's not always gonna be a disabled person in the building, and I, my concern is, um, being the parent of somebody that's very disabled, is that that space is gonna be utilized by a non-disabled person, and therefore, when the space comes available and the person comes in that is disabled, it won't be there. And the person that's disabled is not gonna be able to park on the street and have the exit for the van and that kind of thing. So, and I'm just not comfortable with this, simply because it's a, something I live with every day, sir.
I don't like, I mean, you're... So, you're telling, I guess that they're telling their staff, who's the parking for? The, the staff or the attorneys? Because somebody's gonna be driving around all day looking for space.
Which you do most of the time down there, anyway, yeah, you're right. Even if it's an existing facility.
Yeah, I, I understand the financial hardship, but that doesn't weigh on my decision. I'm looking at it purely from a land use standpoint, and I just think he's, your client has to have the appropriate parking on the building. Any more questions?
Ready for motion?
I move to follow staff's recommendation.
Motion's been made.
For denial on item twenty-five.
Before you do that, I, I didn't hear, uh, Commissioner, your entire, um, statement. There's no appetite to try to revise this, where you can meet a greater parking demand and...
Uh, no, because then we would have to lift the building back up to where it was, and we might as well just proceed with how you approved it previously.
Thank you.
Ready for motion?
There was a motion.
Okay, motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Motion for denial. Please post. Motion for denial carries.
And that denial is final action in the absence of an appeal to the office of the city clerk within ten days.
Thank you.
We now move to item number twenty-six, which is Site Development Review thirty-four, four sixty-two.
Oh, just something real technical, the AV guys are saying that the mics are, when you touch it to your computer, it's gonna be a humming noise, so if you'd make sure that your mic isn't touching your computer when you talk. Thanks.
That is other legal duties as assigned.
Okay, taking that into consideration, we'll go to item number twenty-six, which is Site Development Review thirty-four, four ninety, four sixty-two. The applicant owner is the United States of Mexico for a proposed three thousand two hundred and six square foot addition to an existing nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine square foot building with a waiver of the downtown centennial plan setback requirements at the northeast corner of Hoover Avenue and Sixth Street. Staff report, please.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing to place the, uh, uh, three thousand one hundred and twenty-nine foots, uh, addition to the northeast corner of the existing building, and enclose an existing seventy-seven foots, uh, square foot stairwell at the southeast corner of the building. In addition, uh, they are also, uh, providing a twenty-six space parking lot with associated landscaping south of the existing building. The proposal meets all of the downtown centennial plan, uh, downtown south district requirements, with the exception of a minor waiver. Staff, uh, does support the waiver request, as the placement of the proposed additional, uh, addition maximizes the existing site layout and proposed parking. Additionally, the applicant has provided covered parking stalls adjacent to Sixth Street, uh, and a portion of Hoover Street, which mimic the architectural style of the existing building and provides an edge to the site. Staff does recommend approval, please note, we have received additional comments after posting.
Like to clear the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wish to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record, and sign in, please.
Good evening, Commissioners, and my name is Jeff Wagner, I'm with Rafi Architecture on behalf of the consul, one fifty-five South Water Street Henderson. Um, the consul has purchased the existing vacant building, and the plan here is to renovate that building, add an additional thirty-two hundred square feet to act as a waiting area, um, and move their existing operation from South Fourth Street to Sixth and Hoover, which they've pretty much outgrown their existing facility.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll clear the public hearing closed and turn the matter over to the Planning Commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Mr. Chairman, if, a quick question, and, uh, the, uh, you, you agree to the conditions?
Yes, we, we concur with staff's recommendation, and we've worked closely with them to revise the plan to meet all the downtown centennial...
Commissioner King. Just one item. I looked on, in the backup documents and I drove by the property, and, uh, it, it's weedy. It, it, it looks horrible. We're trying to make a, a city that's more pedestrian-friendly, and, and I look there, they got a nice landscape, they got a nice building, but then it's full of weeds. I want the weeds cleaned up. Can they clean up the, can they clean up the, the, the area there and make it look nicer? And, and get rid of the weeds or in the rocks and landscape areas and make it look nice?
Commissioner, I'm sure we can get the client to do that. The start of construction is slated for the beginning of August, so this project will be under construction by August, but I'm sure that we can get the consul to get a maintenance contract and get that, uh, front elevation along Sixth Street there cleaned up for you.
I mean, it, it's a pet peeve of mine, I, I don't like it. I like to see our, our seat, our streets clean, neat, nice, right?
Absolutely.
Uh, and then, so it's bothersome to me. But, um, you know, I, I don't, I'm not suggesting we make it a, a condition. I just, you're the messenger, this is my message, clean it up, have them clean it up. It's not that difficult to keep it clean.
We'll convey that to the client, actually, to the clients here in the audience this evening, um, but please understand that beginning of August, we're going to start construction, hopefully, uh, with your approval, and that issue will go away at that time. And then, of course, the, the new facility will be maintained as any federal facility is maintained.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Can you repeat that?
Basically, I, I will convey that to the client. We plan to start construction the first week of August, at which time there will be, of course, construction activity happening on-site. They can address it, we'll try to address it before that time. But once they're actually occupying the building, they'll maintain that building just as any federal government would maintain a facility, just as they've maintained their facility on Fourth Street.
So, you're, you're, excuse me, you're new to the, the consulate is new to this location?
It's new to this location, the current location is South three thirty-fourth Street.
Right, right.
So, they've purchased this location because they're in need of a larger facility.
And basically, you would indicate or convey to your client that, you know, they'd like to see the area cleaned, but you're gonna be undertaking major construction within a few months, right?
Yes, we, the plan is to undertake major construction.
I, I think your firm is an outstanding firm, and...
Thank you, sir.
And I agree with you, Commissioner, that it'd be nice to see that. But I think it would be a nice addition to the downtown, and if there's no further, uh, discussion on preparing to make a motion...
I had a question.
Yes, sir.
How, how, how big is that lobby area? You know the square footage?
Well, we're adding thirty-two hundred square feet. In that thirty-two hundred square feet, it's essentially lobby area and, uh, restrooms and two small offices, so the majority of that addition is a waiting area.
Because right now, the consulate gets, gets pretty busy, and there's a lot of folks that visit that on a daily basis, so I just hope there's enough room within the lobby area that, that, instead of having everybody out on, on the street.
We've addressed that concern in the design, actually. There's, uh, approximately a hundred seats in the lobby area. There's also a covered plaza to the east and, um, south of the building to hold any overflow, so there won't be people just meandering on Sixth Street and Hoover Street. There is places to accommodate these people now.
Thank you.
Think we're ready for a motion?
Yes, my motion, Mr. Chairman, would be to follow the recommendation of our staff for approval of agenda item number twenty-six, Site Development Review three four four six two. Motion for approval.
Motion's been made, please cast your votes. Post. Motion carries.
And that is final action in the absence of an appeal within attendance.
We now move to item number twenty-seven, which is Site Development Review thirty-four, four sixty-three. The applicant owner is Eva and Andrew Frank for addition of a two-story, nine-unit apartment building with waivers of the perimeter landscape buffer standards to allow a nine, to allow a zero-foot buffer along the west perimeter where ten feet is required, and zero-foot buffers along portions of the north and east perimeters where six feet is required at seventeen seventy-four Willow Trail and thirty-nine hundred Melody Lane. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the subject site includes an existing apartment complex located at seventeen seventy-four Willow Trail and an existing single-family residence located at thirty-nine hundred Melody Lane. The applicant is proposing to combine the properties in order to add a two-story, nine-unit apartment building, enlarge an existing single-story apartment building without adding any units to it, and demolish the existing single-family residence to provide parking for the site. Additional parallel parking spaces will be provided on the subject site adjacent to Willow Trail. A pool area is proposed for the northeast corner of the site as an added amenity for the residents. If denied, the apartments and single-family residents will remain as they are. The applicant is requesting waivers of the perimeter landscape buffer standards along portions of the west, north, and east perimeters to provide for the parking adjacent to Willow Trail, the proposed pool area, and for handicap accessibility. Staff can support the waiver request, as they are minor in nature, and the applicant is providing additional landscaping within the interior of the site. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of this request. There are additional protests for this item.
Thank you. Like to clear the public hearing open, and ask anyone in attendance wish to speak on the matter, to approach the microphone and give your name for the record, and sign in.
Good evening, Commissioners, Liz Sorokak, thirteen eighty-nine Galleria Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Uh, this property is located in medium-density, uh, land-use area and is zoned R-three. Um, so the project that is before you is appropriate for the zoning and the land use. The part, the proj, project consists of two separate parcels. Um, we have one where the existing apartment building is here, and then we have a second parcel, um, down here where there's an existing single-family home. Um, so this project, as proposed, uh, there would be a renovation of the existing one-story apartment building and construction of a new two-story, nine-unit apartment building, um, on the northwest part of the property, uh, for a total of eighteen units on the property, which is within the, excuse me, within the density requirements. Um, and where the existing single-family home is, there would, that would be, uh, demolished, and there would be parking put there, as well as, um, five parallel parking spaces along Willow, which, um, although they're along the right-of-way, they're actually on our property. Uh, we do have a couple of slight landscape waivers, and those are generally along, uh, Willow, instead of having the landscaping directly along Willow. Um, we have a fifteen-foot landscape buffer, um, we have parking and then sidewalk and a fifteen-foot landscape buffer, um, instead of the landscaping being directly adjacent to the right-of-way. Um, and then we have two slight landscape waivers in the pool area. We would like to not put any landscaping there, and it really doesn't have anything to do with not wanting to incur the cost of that landscaping. Um, it's more of a maintenance issue for that pool, which we believe, um, will be a better amenity, uh, for this apartment complex than additional landscaping, given the location of the pool on the site plan.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Liz, are you saying that, do you agree with the conditions? Or are you saying that these are things now that you don't agree with?
No, 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 I, we agree with all the conditions in the staff report. I'm just explaining to you what the waivers are, um, because sometimes there's questions, the way the waivers are written, when you see it, sometimes it's different than...
The staff's recommending approval?
Correct.
And you're in agreement with all their conditions?
Yes, we are fine with, with, we, we love staff's recommendation of approval, and we are fine with all of the conditions on the staff report. Additionally, staff is recommending approval, as, uh, Commissioner Evans pointed out, and, uh, we respectfully request your approval, and I'm here if you have any questions, and it looks like we may have some residents here with comments as well.
Yes. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak? Please approach the microphone and give your name for the record.
Jess Myers, forty-eight ninety North Simron, eight nine one four nine. Uh, my wife and I represent the property to the north of this project. In the, uh, first notice that came out, there was no mention of the pool. The pool is directly under power lines. The next item, the pool, is twelve feet from a bedroom window. They're planning on no buffer between their, excuse me, their, uh, pool area along that side and the driveway of our house. I just don't think that this is the right thing to do, because it is doubly zoned, it's residential and commercial. But there should be some type of a buffer. And that's why we would recommend no, unless you would be willing to put up an eight-foot fence, and not just a chain-link fence, but a total sound block wall.
What's your address again?
I live at forty-eight ninety North Simron. My wife's folks owned that property with a house at eighteen hundred Willow Trail. It's not shown there, it's, their driveway is along the property line. There's two houses on that property, one the main house and one a, uh, sort of a cceder for the in-laws. The driveway for the house is right along with ASC two. The property line, there's a power line along this line and from this point in. It's very close to the pool. And the bedroom window to the guest house is twelve feet from the pool, and it, and it just wouldn't fly.
If, would you be satisfied with the addition of the eight-foot walls you suggested?
At least an eight-foot block wall. Otherwise, I mean, it's, you walk out your door and you're directly into their property.
I understand.
And you park your car, it's directly there.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak?
Yes, my name is Jan Felhauer, and I reside at four zero five six Melody Lane. And, um, I too have some concerns about this property. As you well know, uh, many of us are mailed, um, postcards to make us aware of this request. And at that time, this was the first that many of us were notified of it, so that was within two weeks ago. Uh, we would have liked to have had an opportunity in order to meet with either a representative or the owner in order to see what it was he was proposing. I think there's a lot of benefit to what he is suggesting, um, but there are a certain number of questions that we do have. A friend of mine owns the property back on this side here, and she has the same concerns as that gentleman, because, um, it currently has, um, a wood fence separating the two properties, and where that pool is would be, uh, adjacent to her tenant's backyard. So, of course, their privacy issue would be infringed upon, as well as, um, the sound and, and, and other issues. And so to take away those plantings, that would of co, of course, create more of a buffer zone. It does seem like it would be conflicting with the, you know, tenants and residents that have been there much longer. Those houses that were built in the back, one was nineteen fifty-one, the other was nineteen eighty-two and nineteen eighty-four. So, you know, making these changes, I think that she should be taken into consideration. The other concern that, um, I had was, um, as I said before, that he did not approach the, the neighbors in order to, you, maybe share his thoughts with us. And so we would like to request that we have a meeting. Can we do that?
That's one of the things I was gonna ask Ms. Sorokak, if she'd come back up, and, um, are there any other neighbors want to speak on this? I see some more, so that, that's an indication to me that, um, we should have a neighborhood meeting and, and work all this stuff out and try to get a win-win.
Hi there, I'm, I'm...
There, there's two mics up, feel free to come... There's two mics up. Feel free to come on up and-
My name is Phil Emery. I live at 3990 Melody.
Do your Michael Jackson tribute.
And I'd have a clear view of actually the construction of this property, and I have a major concern that we already have too much traffic going up on Melody Lane. There's quite a bit of traffic. Right on the corner of Melody down there is the Las Vegas Zoo, and there's any more traffic coming up that street right now is already dangerous for the children that are crossing and stuff in front of the zoo. And we have a lot of people that are short-cutting up along Melody to get to Edwards Park up at the top of the street there and to not turn right on Vegas Drive. And I'm very concerned that the additional density coming up against the RE designation of the homes around us is only going to make it worse. So this is an additional nine units. There's single units, but with an additional 26 parking spaces on Melody, I'm very concerned about the traffic flow that's going to be going up and down the street.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Hi, my name is Kalanasu Dixon. I live at 1810, which is right next to the other gentleman that just spoke. I'm just only one more side over.
1810?
1810, Willow Trail. And I go to work at 4:00 in the morning, and we have a lot of foot traffic. There's no city lights that are on our streets, and to me, just adding more units there is just going to create a lot more people walking around at night. The foot traffic is just really a problem, and when you're adding more and more units to a really small neighborhood like that, we have a couple of businesses that are already there and stuff, and it's just a really nice, quiet neighborhood. And adding all these extra apartments, we already have apartments that they have and then some further down around the corner, and we just seem to have a lot of foot traffic because literally at the end of our street is Wildfire Casino. So it's real easy for people to go down and grab a meal, go down and gamble, go have their beer, whatever. But we have a lot of foot traffic and a lot of stuff, and because there is no more light, there is no lights in our street or anything. It's just the lights that we produce from our homes and stuff. I don't even feel safe going out to my car anymore, and that's really kind of a sad thing because I've lived there a very long time, and I don't even feel safe to come out of my own house sometimes because of the foot traffic. And to me, by adding a lot more units, all we're doing is adding a lot more foot traffic on the very same street.
Thank you. Sir?
Hi, William Burtick, 1811 Willow Trail, across the street from her. I bought the house three years ago with the idea that we were all single-story, very private. Now I'm going to have someone looking down in my yard. So as far as the traffic and the parking, I can see that's going to be a problem, I mean, the whole thing.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on the matter? Sir?
Jess Myers, 4890 North Simron. What we're really concerned about, they want to go right to the property line and bypass the setback. They're already extending the apartment area, and this will all be open. I would think that they should have to at least go with the setback for the normal commercial plus the wall. It's just the wrong thing to put in a neighborhood like that.
Thank you.
It's either all or none, I would think.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and turn the matter over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion. Was there a public hearing held on this project?
Neighborhood, ma'am?
Neighborhood?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Let's let her, what else?
I don't think one was required, was it?
Correct.
But I think in just of all the comments that we just heard, I think it's probably warranted that you have one. I kind of hear some opposition, but I also hear some neighbors that say, "Well, at least talk with us."
Sure.
There may be some room to work something out. I know there's one neighbor that says it's going to be a lot, but I want to caution you, nine units is not a lot compared to what some developers try to get on a little acre. So you may be able to work a little bit with it, and I believe this applicant has a long, I guess the best way to say it is the tenants that have been in the existing one have been in there over 10 years. And I think they're more of a senior nature-
Correct.
-than the young, wild person that's going to be going up and down to the casino. So I think if you talk those things out at a neighborhood meeting, I think you'll probably get a little bit better understanding.
And I think that's a great point you bring up. Are they going to be age-restricted or anything like that? Is there going to be any kind of-
Those are some of the things I think can be covered at a neighborhood meeting.
Okay.
And then, because we don't want to try to redesign this at the podium and do all this here tonight.
Sure.
I just want to try to get the applicant's counsel to agree to host that meeting, and I'll ask to be invited too, so I can sit down with you guys as well.
They are one-unit apartments, so they tend to be-
And there's 18 total, right, at the front?
Yeah, 18.
Well, no, there's an existing nine on the property right now. We're adding an additional nine for a total of 18, which is within the zoning, which is within the permitted density for the R3 zoning.
Correct. Okay.
So if I can just make a couple of points, and I'll start by saying that I'm happy to meet with all the neighbors who are here tonight and additionally, anyone else from the neighborhood who would like to attend. I'd just like to ask that the neighbors that are here, if they could stick around for just a couple of moments so I can get their addresses before they leave. I did want to say, just speak to a couple of things, issues that have been brought up. We are willing to obviously talk about this site plan and try to address all the issues raised by the neighbors, including the issues related to the pool, which may include putting in a wall. And as far as the surrounding property, we're sensitive to those issues, and I'm happy to try to work with those neighbors to try to address whatever issues they may have that they didn't bring up tonight. So I guess with that, I'm here for questions.
Thank you. Ready for motion?
Yes.
If anyone else, everything, otherwise we go a bit for a while.
Give the staff a recommendation on a denial to July 23rd. Does that work?
You want us to come back before you?
Yes.
Is that what, okay, sorry, I didn't understand what you're asking.
So between now and July 23rd, you'll have a neighborhood meeting?
We should be able to do that, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Please include me.
Okay.
I don't want to go to the wildfire, though.
[laughing]
It's meet out in front of the house with the 56 red Chevy.
That's my house!
Is it?
53 Chevy.
53, all right, thank you. That would be my motion, to hold this item till July 23rd meeting.
Motion has been made. Please cast your votes. Some of these young guys don't know the difference between a 53 and a 55. I just don't understand it. I could spot it a mile away. Motion has been made and vote on carried. We now move to Item Number 29, Site Development Review 34469. The applicant owner is Cardan Lydel North LLC for an addition of vehicle display parking spaces, parking lot shade structures, facade renovations, and two porticoes adjacent to the south and east sides of the building at an existing motor vehicle sales new facility at 5550 West Sahara. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, this is a request for site modifications to an existing motor vehicle sales facility. The modifications include two porticoes adjacent to the existing building, seven shade structures within the sales lot area, and the addition of parking lot landscaping and display parking spaces. All the requests and modifications meet the minimum requirements of Title 19, and staff is recommending approval of this request. There are additional protests for this item.
Thank you. I'd like to clear the public hearing open, and anyone in attendance who is to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record, please, and sign in.
Good evening, Richard Schoenfeld, 520 South Fourth Street, on behalf of the applicant. Also present today is Mark Petch, who is the architect that submitted the plans here. We appreciate the staff's recommendation for approval and concur with the conditions, and I just wanted to make one thing clear for the record. I spoke to Mr. Rankin today. He was kind enough to return my phone call very promptly, and I'm sure the commission's aware this is the late Mr. Tobin's property, and obviously, it's a very important project to him as well as his family to continue moving forward with it. The commission, I'm sure, is aware that over the last couple of years, there was a litigation related to the flagpole on this property, and I wanted to make clear with staff that none of the suggested or recommended conditions here have any impact on the flagpole or in any way relate to the flagpole, and Mr. Rankin was kind enough to advise me that these do not have any implication or relate to the flagpole, and obviously, those issues are still being litigated, and the court will end up deciding the flagpole issues, and these are unrelated.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in attendance who is to speak on the matter? Sir?
Good evening. My name is Gary Swansberry. I live at 2270 West Wind Road, just north of the dealership property. I don't know if we can exactly where you put these. Oh, I can't see. Basically, this is the dealership here, and this is my property. Location, so I'm in the rear of the property line. My concerns is the prior approval site required that the, let's see, turn it this way, that there be a buffer to the rear of the property line, and this is a photograph off of the city website that shows the inside of the back property line, the north wall, and there's no vegetation whatsoever. The buffer that was supposed to be installed has never been installed. I took this photograph on the opposite side, and you can see this tree right here. At one time, this tree is no longer there. I took this photograph a couple of years ago, but there's 68 feet of this wall that's without any type of vegetation, any type of buffer. This was a requirement of the original site plan, and it was never completed. I had talked to Mr. Rankin about this. I believe it was January of last year, and he was going to have someone come out and inspect the property. I've never heard anything back. I understand that you've got a lot of different issues to deal with. As far as the site plan, the reason I'm concerned is this is my view from my patio. I've got 13 power poles and 16 lights that I have to deal with, and no longer sit on my patio at night. It's like a tennis court out there. I had hoped that the vegetation would sometime moderate the intrusion of the light to my property.
What's your address, sir?
2270 West Wind Road. So my concern is that they be required to complete the original site plan with the approved plannings along the north wall. Additionally, this morning in my walk, I noticed that they've already made some adjustments on their planner by incorporating vehicles in the buffer zone along Sahara. I believe this is a violation of current codes, if not a public safety issue. This is, actually, I counted five Hummers. This is this morning. And also, they parked one Smart Car over the access point to the power supply or power wiring to the stoplight there. I believe all of this is a violation of the current code. I think it's a public safety issue as well. I don't know how they can come forward asking for a variance or a site plan approval when they're not even meeting the current requirements.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in attendance who is to speak on the matter?
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North Eighth Street. I totally concur with what this person said. I was up here years ago when they were arguing about that, about some greenery and stuff around there, and I remember the promises that they were going to put it in, and then, on top of that, not putting it in and parking vehicles into the green space. I mean, force code enforcement.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll clear the public hearing closed and ask you to respond to the comments. They seem to be photographically supported.
Absolutely.
And your comments are?
My comments are, obviously, this is just being brought to our attention at this point in time.
Are you, you're the representative, or you are the-
I'm the attorney.
Okay.
And also, present is the architect, and I will advise my client, obviously, to comply with all code regulations. The application here for the site development plan obviously doesn't relate to vehicles being parked on a sidewalk. Code enforcement is code enforcement, and I will advise my clients they have to comply with code. I don't think that that should be an impact on the requested modifications here. I'm sure that the commission can note and inform the commission that the purpose for the site plan modification is that the dealership is no longer going to be a Hummer dealership. Based on, obviously, economic times, it is now going to be a Tobin Motor Cars dealership instead of a Hummer dealership, and along with that came modifications to the plan that we have requested, and staff has recognized that the plans do comply with everything that is supposed to be in that area. This is right on Sahara. It's the car corridor. So essentially, we're requesting to modify the building and add some unique features that would support a car dealership in our community.
I'm sure that the additions to the building are well-intended and will support additional sales, but it seems to be the request for the site development review that we're soliciting now while we're in fairly obvious violation of existing conditions. How can we assure that those conditions are going to be met? You know, if you're not following the rules now, why in good conscience would we agree to let you have more opportunities to continue that pattern of non-compliance?
Your Honor, here's what I can, Honorable Commissioner, here's what I can inform the commission that, again, this has just come to our attention. Apparently, the pictures were taken this morning. As the commission may be aware, Mr. Dan Tobin passed away within the last couple of weeks. His office used to be in that building. He was there every day. I've known Mr. Tobin for several years, and I've known his personality and his character, and I know that at previous hearings before the city, people have come forward to speak of his character, and it was all good statements of Mr. Tobin.
I'm not questioning the man's character.
What I'm getting at is that it may be that he is no longer there himself. This has just come to our attention, and I will make sure that it's addressed.
Okay. Prior to bringing this forward, again, you'll have the landscaping in, and-
The landscaping, I would have to talk to Mr. Rankin and find out if that was in fact a condition, but obviously, if that was a previous condition, it would be complied with.
Let's let the director respond. Perhaps you can do it on the fly.
If I may, the staff report clearly indicates that in May of this year, the inspection was done, which observed all of the cars parked in the landscape buffer and the lack of landscaping to meet the existing requirements of the existing project. So this was noticed and is part of the staff report, the non-compliance issues, and that dates back to May.
Okay. Again, I was unaware of that, and I will make sure that it's remedied.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this is a request for a major amendment to an already-approved site development review. Was the already-approved site development review, were there contingencies and conditions that would have required the landscaping where we saw that it was deficient? So we're basically amending the previously-approved, but there have been statements made that the previously-approved site plan had conditions that haven't been complied with. That's a pretty simple analysis, right? So I think we've got to go back, before you're going to get my vote, you've got to go back and do what you committed to do the first time around. And if the pictures are an indication of the visual impact today, I would say that landscaping plan is seriously deficient.
Here's what I would propose. I just spoke to the architect. The only landscaping that, I don't want to obviously put in landscaping under the previous site plan to take it out under the new site plan, but what I'm advised is the only landscaping that would be modified here is the landscaping on Sahara.
You've got to do what you promised to do the first time around.
So what I would request is if we can hold this in abeyance for, I'll ask the architect how long, we will get the landscaping in according to the site plan that's on file now, and then come back before the commission to demonstrate our good faith, and then request the site plan that's being filed.
I think that's a good idea because your request is having a tough time at this point.
Mr. Chairman, can you get the graffiti off the wall, too? That's shown on the pictures in the backup. Do you often go out and look at your walls and make sure they stay clean?
It's, we can give you a copy of the picture, or you can walk around the property and see.
We'll have that removed. There it is. We'll have that removed.
Mr. Chairman, I think we're all in agreement. I would move to have this matter obeyed until such time as, Ms. Wheeler?
If I may, I'm thinking maybe 45 days.
That'd be fine. That'd be fine.
Okay. And so that would be the August fifth?
Okay, Chairman, just for clarification for the applicant, that's to remove the cars from landscaping and also to include the landscaping that wasn't included in the first go-round?
Yes, I think to remove the, the vehicles from the landscaping is a, is a, is an obvious violation. We all drive by it, you know, and this isn't just, oh, gosh, this morning, they parked them up there. It's been that way for, dare I say, years?
Okay.
You know, so it's pretty much a.
And that was, that was my concern, too, because I drove through there and it visibly, you cannot see the traffic coming. So I think it's a public safety issue. But more importantly, in my mind, you're, you're discussing the integrity of, of the design and I wanna see that whatever you agreed to or the, from the previous site plan is in fact done.
Understood.
So August the?
It would be thirteen.
August thirteenth, Planning Commission obey it to that time?
Motion's been made? Motion's made, please cast your votes. Post? We got two items.
Hey Doug?
Motion has been made and carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can you make sure he gets a copy of the original condition?
We have an analysis in the staff report of what's deficient.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'd now like to take the occasion for a short break, if you would, please. Like to call a recess.
Twenty-two seventy West Wind Road, two-two-seven-zero, West Wind Road. Yes, right behind them. Yeah. Excuse me, sir? Yes, I actually, Carl Marcello, who was a builder for Tobin, he came to me and asked me to support the, the flag as memorial to the Vietnam veterans. And I'm a Vietnam vet, he knew that. And so I actually had a neighborhood meeting and got the neighbors' degree and the city, Planning Commission limited him to a hundred-foot flag pole, but he put up a hundred-nine-point-four-seven-foot flag pole to allow for a huge thirty-by-sixty flag. So the issue of noise became worse because of the extra ten feet. And my house is five-hundred-and-thirty-two feet from the flagpole. I have to move to the front of the house when it's windy. Now, it's W-E-S-T-W-I-N-D, West Wind, one word. Yeah. West Wind Road, twenty-two seventy West Wind Road. Now, I took these photographs this morning, but yesterday, they were pulling plants out and cutting the shelves back in order to put more vehicles in. That's why I waited till this morning. Do you, do you think they want these? And then, this, I don't go on Mr. Tobin's property because I probably wouldn't be welcome, but these are the other two. Okay? Yeah, there you go. Thank you very much.
Oh, yeah. That'd be good. You have. All right? I'll take it. I get to present. Cool. How you doing? Reasonably well. Gina?
Yeah, you know, I wanted to speak up and suggest that they grill her a lot more harshly than they were really late letting her off easy.
Only the twenty-foot question got her.
Yeah.
So she had to worry about.
I thought, gosh, you guys are letting her off easy.
I wanted to, you know, to talk about any of the, if there's any exposed neon or.
Yeah. Come on. There were some. Real grilling.
Exactly.
Yeah. It's okay, I'm staff. Let all the other people go first.
Everything else I'd bring.
I'm trying to get it out of here for you. How are you doing? Another meeting's been already.
What are they for?
Commissioners.
For what?
We could put them in.
Oh.
So I think that's what this is. Either it's a packet. No, they're all the same size. It's gotta be a packet.
Is that something being handed to the commissioners for an item?
Not for an item, it's, I don't know if it's a package or something.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Nice. 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 Oh, I'm in recess. Yeah. It's okay, I'm staff. Let all the other people go first. Everything else I'd bring. Exactly.
I'm trying to get it out of here for you. How are you doing?
I'm fine, how are you?
Other meetings been already? Who? Who? What did Tom say to wife, or?
Wow. Well, no one would hear your, uh? I feel, I feel in love, Brian. I sit back there. I sit back there for laughs. That's okay. Oh, there's, okay, you're the big, you got two people.
Okay. Now I'd like to declare the meeting back in order and move on to item number thirty. DIR thirty-four, five-eight-six is to provide an annual report on the Las Vegas twenty-twenty master plan. Staff report, please.
Yes, I have a slide to show for this.
If I may, this is Jim Marshall, senior planner, will be making this presentation this evening.
So yes, I'll be giving you an update. Next slide, please. Pursuant to NRS two-seven-eight-one-point-nine-zero, the planning commission is required to review the master plan implementation progress annually. The report I'm providing you tonight will do three things. Give you an update on the master plan policy document, a status report on city accomplishments fiscal year two thousand eight to two thousand nine, and a status report on projected implementation items for two thousand nine, two thousand ten. Next slide, please. Now, by the right, by statutes two-seven-eight-point-one-six-zero requires a preparation and adoption of a comprehensive plan for the physical development of the city. It also requires the master plan address eighteen different subject areas ranging from land use to school facilities. Since the adoption of the Las Vegas twenty-twenty master plan, planning department has ventured to complete these requirements as separate elements. In fiscal year two thousand eight, two thousand nine, these items were adopted. We had the community design element, the public buildings element, public services and facilities element, school facilities element, transit element, and lastly, the transportation of streets and highways element. Next slide. The planning department, we've endeavored to put together a five-year plan, basically update the remaining elements, as well as the overall policy document we're looking to update in two thousand eleven. Through these updates, the city remained in compliance. Basically, these are the following elements we're looking to update in fiscal year two thousand nine to two thousand ten. The land use element, the rural neighborhood, neighborhood preservation element, the economic element, the population element, and the public safety element. The reason why the asterisk is by the land use element and the rural neighborhood preservation element, when those will be, will be updated soon, we'll be in full, full compliance with all eighteen elements required by NRS, which will make Margot and Flynn extremely happy.
That will be for the first time in history.
Very good.
So, if I can get the next one?
Thank you, Flynn.
Yes. Um, yes. Next, we'll talk about the master plan review that we did. Basically, in an effort to continue developing relevant plans and documents that are internally consistent, staff reviewed policies and recommendations of the master plan policy document and the elements. The product was a status report detailing each policy. The master plan policy contains a hundred-and-fifty policies, while the elements contain about three-hundred-and-thirty policies or recommendations. What we did is we labeled each one, complete, not complete, or ongoing. With regards to the hundred-and-fifty master plan policies, twenties were deemed complete, hundred-and-seventeen ongoing, and thirteen not complete. Of the eighteen elements, three-hundred-and-thirty policies or recommendations, thirty-nine were complete, two-hundred-and-fifty-nine were ongoing, and thirty-two were not complete. In the backup we provided you in the staff report, I couldn't provide you the entire status report because it'd be over a hundred-and-fifty pages long, but instead, what I did is I, I gave you the not complete items. And what we'd like for you to look at those and give us comments on those and give us direction on those as well. At the end of my presentation or in the future, we can come back to you and, and report on those as well. So, next slide, please. I wanna talk about the accomplishments the city had over the last fiscal year, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, and in regards to the, the master plan. In accordance with the re-urbanization policy one-point-four-one, that buildings with the greater downtown areas which have been identified as historic structures, the historic history school was completed. And in accordance with the re-urbanization policy to provide highly, high-quality transit, the Ace Downtown Connector at Grand Central Parkway was completed and that's the BRT expansion that's gonna go into the downtown area. As well as a, as the, regarding the, by the revised statutes, six master plan elements were completed. And in accordance with the neighborhood revitalization policy one-point-one-three, that new market rate, multi-unit mixed-use residential development encouraged on vacant or utilized sites, the Allure, the Streamline, the El Cortez, and World Market were completed. And in accordance with neighborhood revitalization policy two-point-three-two, that a West Las Vegas fan provides such direction for West Las Vegas and adjacent areas, the Bylaw Market, Cox of Communication, Bank of America, and the West Las Vegas Plan update completed. And lastly, the, in accordance with the economic diversity, to ensure that adequate amounts of park space and trails are designated, the Centennial's Park, Washington Buffalo Park, Teton's Trail, Park Phase Two, and Buckskin Cliff Shadows Park, and that also won an award as well. So next slide, please. Next, I wanna talk about the items that we're looking to implement in two thousand nine, two thousand ten. As I mentioned before, we're looking to implement five master plan elements which will bring us up to compliance. As well, in accordance with neighborhood revitalization policy two-point-one-two, which Flynn is gonna talk about in his presentation, that new commercial development be designed in a walkable and non-vehicular friendly manner, providing shelter from sun and wind with outdoor seating areas and other amenities and parking areas located from the street. Staff is preferring two walkability plans and a corridor plan. In Ward One, in the Meadows Neighborhood. In Ward Two, Village Square, which is intersection of Fort Apache and Sahara, half-mile radius from there. And lastly, the West Charleston Corridor Plan, which boundaries from I-15 to Rainbow. In accordance with reorganization goal number one, that downtown area will emerge as a permanent hub of business, residential, government, tourism, and gaming. Following projects are planned for completion in the downtown redevelopment area. We have the Golden Nugget Phase Three, a five-hundred-and-five-room tower expansion, the Louvre, Ruvo Brain Institute, sixty-two-thousand-square-foot medical research and treatment facility. And in accordance with reorganization objective one-point-six, to provide high-quality transit, the second portion of the Ace Downtown Connector Phase Two at Casino Center and Third Street will be completed, as well as the Central City Intermodal Transit Terminal and eighteen-thousand-square-foot terminal operation facility as well. And the last thing, in accordance with the school facilities element, something I've been working on, to facilitate the development of Clark County School Master Plan, staff is currently working with school facilities work group to amend the SNRPC regional policy plan to include a joint schools element. Once this item is approved, this will permit staff to pursue developing a valleywide master plan for schools. So that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I can definitely try to answer those or bring it to my director or Flynn as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to turn the matter over now to the planning commissioners for discussion. Any questions, staff, on this update?
I have a question.
Please.
On the, on the West Las Vegas plan, and maybe Margot, you can probably help this. I know most recently, in Ward Five, there were some more revisions or input from neighborhood meetings to that West Las Vegas plan. Are those, have those been implemented in this new revised addition or will they be added?
That, that item is actually going forward on July first.
July first?
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
We're going to city council.
Thank you.
Any other points of discussion? Sure, come on up, Mr. Farlow.
This is a public hearing?
I think it's a public game, come on.
Well, I was gonna hold this for public, uh, citizen participation, but.
That's okay, go ahead.
But this is, this is the time for it. I read on the, the news on a, I think it was nightly business reporter, one of them, where we're gonna be facing one-point-two-billion square feet of vacant commercial space, that there will never be any use for it. Those jobs are gone forever. I wonder what we're, do we have any backup plans for all of these boarded-up places or that are not gonna be used? I mean, is there a way, some, and I don't know, Margot, where I heard this or something, but it seemed like a year or a little bit more, a year and a half ago, there was an, somebody came in and proposed a shopping center that also. but it seemed like a year or a little bit more, a year and a half ago, there was an, uh, somebody came in and proposed, uh, a shopping center that also had some apartments in the back of it, that was really nice, and I wondered, you know, if we could think of something like this because the... By twenty, I think it's twenty-thirty-five, the population of this, the United States is going to be four hundred million people. Those people are going to have to be, go someplace. The home thing is a disaster. So, it looks like we're talking about apartments, is, is what I'm looking at. And so, I'm wondering, you know, if, if the developers are, are coming in, uh, if we could, uh, if somebody could go out and, and review this project that has already been built, I guess it was built, and look and see how it's going, I, maybe, uh, maybe they could, uh, use that as an example for, for some future thing, or however it's going to be, but, I mean, we have to address the disaster coming up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other thoughts for consideration? We've got a meeting that's scheduled for the end of July for the staff, uh, and the planning commission to meet, to study workshop. If we have suggestions or thoughts on the matter, I think that'd be appropriate time to bring those forward.
Yes. We've got one more item.
Okay, good. Okay, so that's the conclusion of item number thirty-one. We can now move on to item number thirty-two, DIR thirty-four, six-forty-nine. It's a progress report on the planning development departments regarding the developments of corridor and plans to, as discussed on March twenty-first, March twenty-third, two thousand nine Joint City Council Planning Commission Workshop.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. I'm Flynn Fag with the Planning Department. If I could have the next slide, please. As you'll recall, on March twenty-third, at our Joint City Council Planning Commission Workshop, we talked about the idea of corridor plans and walkable community plans, and also the Great Streets Program that is sponsored by the American Planning Association, What Makes a Great Street. What I'd like to do is just briefly, uh, discuss with you this evening, our corridor plans and our progress on corridor plans thus far. Next slide, please. Again, as we reviewed at the workshop back in March, there are certain qualities that great streets have, as defined by the American Planning Association. Next slide, please. And the question is, uh, why are great streets important? One of the things that we talked about was that world-class cities have memorable streets and neighborhoods. Next slide, please. And that the quality of streets is vital in defining the character of cities. And, you know, one of the reasons people decide to invest in a city is because of the quality or character of its streets and neighborhoods. Next slide, please. Also, as Jim has just given you a report on our master plan, our master plan does direct us to look at improving our streetscape and our infrastructure in the central city, and also throughout our neighborhoods. Next slide, please. But most importantly, improved streets and improved neighborhoods equal improved quality of life for our residents, and that's really what we're about and why you serve in the position that you do. Next slide, please. So, the question is, are we going to build great streets in Las Vegas, or are we going to continue building the same as we have? Uh, our corridor plans are one of our answers to that question, and by looking at existing streets, existing rights of way, we are proposing to make improvements so that they do become great streets. Next slide, please. The question is, what is a corridor plan specifically? It is a specific plan for a defined area of a street corridor. It identifies improvements for all modes of transit, and that includes cars, uh, transit, bicycle, and pedestrians. Uh, also, to accommodate encouraged transit, many of our existing rights of way don't have adequate bus turnouts, which, uh, impacts our capacity on those streets and the ability to move. Also, it will address things such as pedestrian walkability, adding shade to our corridors and other streetscape enhancements, making our intersections safer and easier to cross for pedestrians. And then also, as mentioned in, uh, the American Planning Association's Characteristics for Great Streets, to establish a distinct character for corridors, so that they become memorable places. Next slide, please. We, as staff, have identified eight corridors for our initial round of study, including the Alta Rampart-Fort Apache segment, Charleston, Cheyenne, Eastern, Fremont, Grand Teton, Rancho, and Sahara. And if we could go to the next slide, it's actually a little bit easier to look on a map. One of the reasons why we chose the corridors that we did was, one, there are areas where there are transit enhancements proposed, and so we wanted to dovetail with those efforts. Um, also, others are somewhat of a focus for the neighborhood. And then also, we wanted to look at areas throughout the city for our initial round of corridor plans, so that we're able to make an impact to all areas of the city instead of focusing on one direct area.
If I may, on the map, the, the colored areas, the colored corridors are the corridors that you identified, and then the sort of green areas with the star, that is the focus of the walkable communities.
Exactly. And again, we want our corridor plans to work with our walkable community plans, so we're trying to think of those working together as well. Uh, one of the things that we're questioning ourselves, uh, is, we had identified Cheyenne as one of the corridors for study, but actually, in discussions and looking at some of the other things that are going on, we're wondering if perhaps moving just a little bit to the south and looking at Lake Mead instead might be a better corridor in that particular area of town for study. And, and so, we haven't really set these in stone yet, but again, we're looking at these as possible corridors. So, if you have any suggestions, we're more than happy to consider those. Mr. Goings?
I applaud you. I think Lake Mead should be, and I think, because when I look at these proposed corridors, I see nothing in the, in the heart of Ward Five. I don't see any Lake Mead, Owens, Washington, which I think are, are ripe for walkable communities in their close proximity to downtown, and especially with all of this hoopla that's about the F Street. I think, um, now is the, is the time to, to, to make that a walkable transition into downtown and make it scenic. And also, as Ms. Duncan from the West Las Vegas Chamber, um, put some ambiance in there to reflect the character of that neighborhood.
And that's extremely important, again, having a distinct character for each of those corridors.
Thank you.
And so, that's one of the changes that we're considering from the map that we had originally shown you. Next slide, please. In terms of the corridor plan document itself, this is what we're proposing that it would contain. First of all, there would be an introduction, which gives the basic location of the corridor, background on its development, history of its development, et cetera. The next section of the document would talk about the public input process, and I'm going to go into that in just a little bit more detail a little later on. Existing conditions is obviously very important in terms of current land use along the corridor, uh, our traffic conditions, any physical conditions along the corridor. The next section of the document will include design standards as we look at adding streetscape improvements or any transit enhancements or improvements. And then finally, looking at design treatments. Is there a certain type of signage or building facade improvements or things like that that could be added to enhance the corridor and give it, uh, a character? And then finally, the last section of the corridor plan document will be our implementation plan or our action plan, where we'll outline our priorities in terms of the improvements that need to be made and how we're going to get there, and talk about funding of those improvements. Next slide, please. In terms of the implementation, here's what we're proposing. That first of all, we go through the plan development process for each of the corridors. So, we develop the plan document, and then eventually, it will be adopted by city council. The next thing that we need to do is to look at funding sources, whether we can do that through our general fund, through capital improvement projects, looking at federal grants that may be available for the different types of improvements, or looking at other types of grants, such as NDOT enhancement grants or CDBG grants, um, whatever may be applicable. So, again, we'll be looking for funding after we develop the plan. And then the final part is implementation, in terms of developing construction documents where that may be necessary, or if there are any recommended code changes that come out through that plan process that we need to make for that specific area of the code. Uh, that's something that we might also do as part of the implementation process. Next slide, please. Uh, again, we showed you this example of what we anticipate the corridor plans can lead to, is that, starting out with the existing conditions, we look for streetscape improvements that we can do, enhancing the sidewalk, adding street trees, improving lighting, banners. And then ultimately, once we make improvements, we are hoping that private investment will follow, again, adding to the character of the place and adding to the vitality of the corridor itself. Next slide, please. In terms of our schedule, Jim had mentioned that we are starting out on that already. For calendar year two thousand nine, we're looking at doing Charleston and Sahara. Um, there have been some recent developments with, uh, the RTC looking at Sahara, so we might actually delay that one and move one of the other plans up during two thousand nine. In two thousand ten, we're looking at doing three plans, Rancho, the Alta Rampart-Fort Apache Plan, and Cheyenne or Lake Mead, actually. And then in two thousand eleven, Fremont, Eastern, and Grand Teton, looking at those corridors and developing those plans in two thousand eleven. And then after, uh, two thousand eleven, looking at additional corridors that might be selected. And again, we'll be looking to you all to help us in that process of selecting additional corridors. Next slide, please. The plan that we are currently working on is the West Charleston Corridor Plan, and that spans an area from I- fifteen on the east to Rainbow Boulevard on the west. Next slide, please. We have just barely started this process. We have done our existing conditions research. Actually, Yorgo Kajabas, uh, is our staff person who's working on this and has been out and documented the existing conditions. And we are looking at having a public input session within about the next month or two, uh, so that we can receive input from the public who are there along the corridor. There's a couple of issues, just looking at the existing conditions, that we have to address. Number one, as you can see in the photo on the right, that we have streetlights and other equipment right in the middle of our sidewalks, and so that's one of the issues that we hope to solve with our corridor plan. Uh, also, we were looking at the possibility of bicycle lanes, and Charleston is quite a constrained facility, and the lanes are already as narrow as they can be. We can't go any narrower on those. And so, we're going to have to look at other means to accommodate bicycles. Now, obviously, there's Alta, which has dedicated bike lanes. We might look at another east-west corridor such as Oki, and then having connections on the north-south streets in between them, so that way, we can accommodate bicycles in some fashion. So, working on these corridor plans, it's not going to be easy. There's not going to be easy answers to some of the things that we do, but again, that's the process of going through that and studying that and seeing, uh, what level of success we can achieve in, in making them more pedestrian-friendly or friendlier to bicycles or transit. Next slide, please. In terms of the public input process, we are looking to involve property owners who are directly abutting the corridor, business owners who are also within the corridor. We will also invite the neighborhood associations that are immediately adjacent to the corridor, and then notify our senate and assembly districts as well. And, moving on to the next slide, as I've just been given the, the signal.
I was indicating the commission.
Yeah, I'm getting to the commission in just a moment. So, in looking at the overall process on West Charleston, again, we've completed the existing conditions research. We're looking at scheduling our first public meeting, then we get into the plan development stage. Once we have that, we'll then send it for internal review among the different city departments, get to our sub-second public input meeting, uh, to review the document with them, um, make any revisions based on input. And this is where I wanted to get to. In terms of planning commission, uh, I'm not sure that one meeting, just one planning commission meeting, is enough to actually review the document. Obviously, we're going to send that out to you ahead of time, so that you have an opportunity to review that. But again, we'll take your input in terms of how you'd like to review those documents, because I don't think that, you know, again, one sitting of the commission is enough to adequately look at all the recommendations, and then ultimately, they will be adopted by city council. And then, I think I have one more slide, or is that the last one? That's it? Okay. Any questions, any concerns, any additional input?
I realize this is just a, a first presentation of an update. There'll be many more to come, but I would like just to give you just a thirty-second observation. Uh, when we look at this, we talk about a, uh, multimodal method of transportation in these corridors. And I think that multimodal or multimodal, uh, consideration should possibly reflect the needs of the individual communities being serviced, such as, out in Sun City, if you elect to, um, enhance Lake Mead, you may need to take into consideration golf carts. You've also got the opportunity for, uh, having some successes fairly immediately. The ones that come to my mind first is the area along Rampart between, uh, say Charleston and Desert Inn, where you have close proximity to the area known as the lakes, so that's all already fairly heavily landscaped and just falls short of getting it into where some of the business developments are, to make it really a, an opportunity to have a, uh, initial very positive first impact. The same thing happens up in the, uh, back to the, to the Lake Mead site where, uh, over, uh, where it ties into the desert shores area and south shores area, where you've got a lot of heavy landscaping on the interior. That development would lend itself very easily to, uh, um, not only foot traffic, but also bicycle traffic. Because there's a, a lot of people that bicycle around that loop there on a regular basis. Additionally, you've got to get into consideration of the existing landscaping and who maintains it. A lot of those areas that I mentioned were, are maintained by HOAs, and if the city wants to go in and enhance it, there'd have to be some discussion with the HOAs about how that's going to be split up. I think it's just superb and, and keep up the good work. It looks great.
Just, just a couple of comments. How come we can't implement some of this now, like, like, for instance, you've, you've got a, a project on Martin Luther King now that's being widened from Bonanza, um, you know, all the ways north to, what, Cary? To me, this'd be a perfect opportunity to get those streetscapes and things in now while, while the street's torn up. I don't, I don't know if that's been addressed, but, you know, when I look at intersections, like you said, um, um, Rancho and Sahara, I mean, how much more can we do? They just did a major freeway upgrade at that interchange. I, I, you know, when I look up and down Sahara, I don't know if it needs trees, or, there's enough streetscape there, but why don't we work from the inside out on some of these areas that never get any of this, this enhancement? Um, but yet, we have an opportunity. I mean, Martin Luther King's ripped up right now, and, and they're widening it, and I think this would be the perfect opportunity to put the appropriate streetscapes and, and, and all of those, those things in now.
One of the things, and Chairman and High Chair, the coordination between the departments, uh, and I think Bart will attest to this. You've probably had more planning department and public works department sitting around the same table, talking about these projects and coordinating really at a level better than, than we've seen. And that's part of the whole process, that is to ensure that, just like we did with the Parks and Rec element and other ones, ensuring that the plans are coordinated with the capital improvement program. And that's a major portion of the West Las Vegas update that you'll be seeing coming at your next meeting. With regard to MLK, that's already under construction. The contracts have been done, but that issue of the coordination of the plans and the transit with RTC and with the Public Works Department is key to what we're working on right now. And the number of meetings and the amount of coordination that's going on is of primary importance as we go forward with these plans to ensure that we achieve just exactly what you're talking about, uh, is the coordination of the corridor plans with the capital improvement program.
Jim, please.
Yeah, I, and I too applaud you. I, a- as Mr. Marshall was giving his presentation, I was thinking about, uh, Michael Buckley, Commissioner Buckley, and I served on the twenty-twenty Master Plan, uh, Committee back in, I think it was ninety-seven, ninety-eight, somewhere like that. And granted, we have this downturn in our economy, but from the time of that original, those original public meetings on the twenty-twenty, we grew like a city on steroids. And I look back sometimes, and I, I'm very critical, and yet, I have to look at the achievements, you know? The, the World Market Center, the Fifth Street School, the, you know, the Lou Ruvo Brain Center. I mean, there's just some remarkable things that have occurred over the last decade, and, and we're many years already into that plan. So, I, I applaud what you've done, and, and I think having that document to guide us is a good thing. I know the devil's in the details, and I know we're not prepared to, to address the specifics and the minutia at this point, but there are things like, uh, in the corridor plans that I'd like to see looked at, like, uh, with the treescapes, do we have an idea about consistency so that we don't have a block of palms and a block of acacias? And, you know, where it looks hodgepodge, um, so there's some continuity and connectivity. So, there's some continuity and connectivity. Secondly, the big eight-hundred-pound gorilla is who pays? And I, I think that, I, I don't know whether this is done through, through SIDs or, or what, but I know as you put in the, the tree, the treescapes, the streetscapes, which provide the shade, which will provide the impetus for pedestrian, you know, walkability, the irrigation issue always comes up. Who's going to pay for the irrigation? So, I don't, I don't know how we answer those things. I would say that we, as a commission, and those of us who get to make decisions, really should look at this plan and try to honor it as applicants come forward seeking waivers and variances to the streetscapes, because if, if we let it chip away, and if we grant this person relief and that person relief, ultimately, I don't think we'll have the, the vision that we hope for. So, I know that we need to be reasonable and take each application on its own merit, but I really think that we, the decision-makers, have to honor the vision and allow it to, to happen. So, I, just some, some comments, but I applaud you and Margot and the staff for all of your hard work, and as I look back over the years, I see some great successes, and we get over these economic bumps, I think we're going to see some, some more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, just one more thought, though. No one had mentioned working with RTC regarding the bus stops. That's another part of it we've got to consider.
Absolutely.
Mr. Farley, would you like to?
I'd like to make two comments. Number one, I agree with Commissioner Goines, that Lake Mead should be the route, and it should go all the way out to the lake, because the, when, once you get into the mountains and back there, there's, the state has geological formations where the earth has been turned up, and those are quite interesting to great undivided.
Number two, I'd like to, I, I agree with Commissioner Evans. I mean, they, Margot and the group ought to be really applauded for this. They've done terrific work.
Thank you. Thank you for your report. We can now move to the citizen participation part of the, the agenda. Citizen participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. No subject may be acted upon by the planning commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single item, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Is there anyone wishing to speak during the public participation portion of the meeting? Seeing none, I'll declare the public meeting closed. Our business is concluded, and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.